If I didn't have everyone's attention, I'll call to order the Peru City Common Council, February 7, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. If everybody will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance for Melissa Cox to do the invitation.
(inaudible)
(inaudible) allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this time. We thank you for the wonderful things that you were doing within our community and our county. Father, I ask that you give wisdom to each one of the councilmen and groups and to the mayor. Be with them and protect them during this time of the season. We just give you all the honor and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Everyone be seated. Roll call.
Anderson?
Here.
Guston?
Here.
Plotho?
Here.
Ramsey?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Sayadashni?
Here.
Okay. Moving right along, reading a correction of the journal from last meeting.
I have something. I don't understand what underneath Rebecca Thoden, underneath communications, I don't understand what that even means. It's not like even a coherent thought, so maybe if somebody could clarify that. Says Rebecca Thoden Civic Center Director stepped forward to explain her emotional response in the last month's meeting but to affirm her words in responses answered. I don't really understand what that means.
I can't answer for that since I didn't type it.
What'd you say?
I can't answer for that. These are Susan's minutes, so I don't know.
How about we just correct that and just put Rebecca Thoden Civic Center Director stepped forward to explain her response to the previous month meeting?
Wouldn't do that.
Something like that. Okay.
Any other corrections?
Yes. I'm not sure if...I'll wait till committee. I beg your pardon. I'll just wait till committee to...
So, no other correction in minutes?
One question to Dustin. When Kirk Crosskov stepped forward to make the correction, was that required for our vote to be for Dave Van Bellen?
It wasn't an ordinance. It wasn't a resolution. I mean, it was just the approval.
Right.
It's no different than your liaison assignments. You guys just accept it, voted it, and you guys accepted it at that point.
So, we didn't have to do that second vote?
Okay.
No, sometimes you just please people.
Yeah.
You do?
Sometimes.
Okay. All right, well, I'll make a motion that we adopt the minutes with that correction that I made.
One second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sayadashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
All right, moving right along, go to the council liaisons communications. We'll start with Betsy and go right on down the line.
Okay, I have nothing to report this month.
Okay. Mark?
Animal Control has five dogs looking for its owner still. Because I talked to him today, and he said, "You still got five?" He said, "Yes." So, but he's hoping to get rid of those the next few days. This goes out to the street department, street department, and also the Miami County Highway Department, Parks Board, and the...all the businesses and neighbors. Thanks for cleaning up the streets, the sidewalks. Very appreciative. I know you've worked awfully hard to do all this, and it's not an easy thing to do, but I appreciate it, and everybody else appreciates it in the city of Peru and also in the county as well. So, thank you very much and keep up the hard work. Also, the Miami County Commissioners agreed to help out the Miami County Health Department to use their grant money that they will receive to hire a school liaison, which will be $20 per hour, and they will be able to terminate that anytime during this particular situation. So, that's all I got.
So, I've talked with the Ordinance Review Committee, and Dustin, could we amend the nepotism ordinance to include...this is about liaison? I know, it's Ordinance Review Committee. Okay. Can we...to include in-laws and step member families, please?
The council can...if passed, they can agree to amend that ordinance how they see fit.
So, does the ordinance...so, it's outside of the...can you explain, please, what we need to do to do that?
So, if someone wanted to present an ordinance, drafted one, had one drafted, whatever, ultimately have to go back to the council for council approval.
Right. Right. That's why I'm asking is if you...would you...who do we need? You are the person who would draft that?
I could if requested. I'm not always wanting to draft ordinances. I mean, in the past, members of the council have drafted their own ordinances and...
I don't have the knowledge to do that.
I'd have no problem doing that. However, I'd need to know what type of language somebody would want in there.
Okay.
So, if you wanted to add that language in there, I could prepare one.
I beg your pardon?
I could prepare one.
Okay. Steve, how do you want me to proceed with that? Just request it?
If you...well, I have to know what you're requesting. So, if you said if you wanted...for instance, you take the language that's...that's ordinance is currently written, and then you put what you would like to see, how you'd like to see it changed, shoot me an email and I'll draft something.
Okay. I'll do that. I'll meet with...I'll talk with Betsy and Steve from the committee and change that or amend it. The Future Growth Committee, we've had to struggle with this one to figure out where it belonged, and we're going to do it the way other committees are done, and we'll prepare...I'm preparing an agenda. Pete and I have talked about this. I'll prepare an agenda, post it, and take notes, and the notes will be published as well. Will that suffice?
So, in looking and doing some...yeah, this was actually a standing committee created by the mayor, previous mayor, previous administration, two administrations ago. It's not a council created committee, so there's really no need to go about posting notice and whatnot at this time. Now, if the council wanted to create its own committee, it can pass an ordinance to do so.
Okay.
And Dustin, would there be any...I mean, do we have to report any, you know, to the council from those meetings?
And I guess, are you talking about if the council passed an ordinance or as it is now?
Well, this Future Growth Committee, I'm not quite sure, you know, legally where we're at with that.
So, I...and it's kind of been a little defunct until recently. There's...as far as I'm aware, there's been no one actually appointed to that or requested to serve on that committee.
I mean, are we talking about, is this moving like in a voluntary kind of, you know, arrangement?
Well, all committees are voluntary, but correct? So...
Well, what I'm saying is, do we have to report to the city council like the other liaisons?
It reports to the mayor. This council reports to the mayor...well, sorry, not this council.
This meeting...
Committee reports to the mayor.
Yeah.
It's a standing committee.
So, Mayor Hewitt, would you like to have somebody on this committee on your behalf, but we will meet with you?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we'll meet with you after the first meeting?
Yes.
Would that be okay?
That's fine.
But I'll prepare an agenda and send it to you?
Okay.
Is that the best way to do it?
That'll work.
Okay, great. Thank you. So, last year on committee liaison...last year, January for committee liaisons, we voted in Tom as the Board of Works liaison. On the website, it now says that Pat is the person, and I know that there's a code or an ordinance that says whoever's the president pro temp is the person for the...is the liaison for the Board of Works. My concern is, we voted it in here, don't we need to make it on record to revote and change it?
I think that'd be fine. I think it should happen that way. It should some affirmative type vote, but it's nothing to...
I think that would be a waste of time. To see other ordinances, that's what it's asked to be. Let's just follow the ordinance.
But the thing is, it's...
In the day of the liaison assignments, they're not...I don't want to say they're pointless, but they're...they're nothing that's going to get the city in trouble whether...how they're voted in, doesn't really matter. But if, following procedure, because you guys have voted in positions who, not necessarily voted in, but nominate yourselves or choose how those are assigned, then I think it'd be appropriate to follow that course of action in this situation.
So, we should take a vote to...
I think you can, yes.
Okay. So, we need to vote to put...
Do we do that now during liaison?
Not under...not under meetings on assignment.
Do we need to amend it?
That's not part of the taking vote night. It's not part of the liaison.
Right, right. It's not appropriate to have it here during liaison communications. This should just be your reporting about your committee, and then this would be something that we need to fix before we adjourn tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Then, you wouldn't need to add anything to the agenda. You'd just make a motion on it.
Okay.
It's not a real discussion.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you. I'm done.
Thank you.
Do you have a liaison report?
I did the Future Growth and Ordinance Review Committee, and I was at the utility board, but Pat's going to respond to that.
Okay.
All right. For February Liaison Report, Board of Works, they met on January 4th and January 18th this month at 5:00 p.m. They accepted the opening bids for the Community Crossings Matching Grant Project on North Broadway. Unfortunately, we lost another officer. We are sorry to lose him. The Aviation Board met on January 11th at 7:00 p.m. at the municipal airport. During the first meeting of the month, there was the election of officers, and they stayed the same. A big thank you to Chris Souldy for conveying for Kelly Wolf, the airport manager, during his time off for COVID. The hours are going back to normal. We will be voting on establishing a Fund for the Airport Rescue Plan Act grants tonight. The Utility Board met on January 5th and January 19th at 4:00 p.m. The first meeting of the month had the election of officers. They stayed the same. Mr. Chance is staying in touch with the new housing development for water, wastewater, and the new meters. He also is meeting with the end engineer about the new streetlight requirements. Planning Commission met on January 25th at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall. I was unable to attend because of COVID. The Civic Center meeting on January 29th was canceled. Because of COVID, we met...we will meet on February 26th at 9:30 a.m. We will be voting on establishing a non-reverting fund for the Civic Center tonight. As promised, I have the monthly activity reports for December 21 and January 22, and I have those here. For December 2021, there were nine scheduled events and one tour. We generated $880 in income, and all of that income went into the general fund. In comparison, in 2019, there were 28 events held at the Civic Center, which generated a total of $14,485, of which only $1,225 went into the general fund. Maintenance was performed for the commercial stove and serviced along with the professional cleaning of the vent system. Carpets were professionally cleaned. Donations received, Victrola from Richard and Debbie Beam, Christmas decoration from Kathleen Plotho, carnival glass from Ray and Vita Sutton, a China Hutch Christmas tree and Christmas decorations from Terry and Jerelyn Monroe, Christmas tree decoration from Ham Poff, a crock pot from Richard Donahoe, Christmas decorations from Greg and Brenda Douglas, a painting from Eric and Lori Hawke. We would also like to thank St. Vincent Chapin for allowing us to select items from their Christmas store prior to opening it to the public. The Civic Center Monthly Activity Report for January 2022, six scheduled events, $1,090 was generated. All of that money went into the general fund. In January 2020, six events were held at the Civic Center, which generated $1,009, of which $179 went into the general fund. And that is all of my reports.
Steve?
I have nothing to report.
Pete?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Tom?
Me either.
Okay. Moving right along, under unfinished business, we have none under new business. City Peru Common Council, ordinance number 2-2022, ordinance to establish a non-reverting donation fund within the budget of the Civic Center. Entertain a motion to consider ordinance 2-22.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 2-22, creating a non-reverting donation fund within the budget of the Civic Center.
Second. Motion for roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sayadashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Motion for discussion?
I have a question, Lori. When Pat said that it goes into the general fund, isn't there a line item that...for the Civic Center that...
It does go directly into the general fund. The line item would be simply a revenue code where you could pull out just exactly how much revenue was generated.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions on this ordinance, on a non-reverting donation fund within the budget of the Civic Center?
Basically, I'll just explain it to the public. It's creating a fund so that if the Civic Center were to get a donation from somebody, then they would be able to use that money to spend back on the Civic Center. Currently, if they wanted to, like, they made some money off the mayor's activities when they had to meet the mayor, they had to go through the clerk to ask to see if they could get that money. So, this would be like creating their own fund that they could use if they got any donations.
And also, to take it one step further, should somebody come up and say they wanted to donate $1,000 towards a new roof, that...correct me if I'm wrong, that $1,000 can only be used for roof repair or replacement as long as there is a designated specific item for it. Otherwise, what this is, is where we can take any fund generated. If somebody wanted to come up and say, "Hey, I want to do a fundraiser for the Civic Center," and they raised $10,000, and they say, "This is for the Civic Center," then the Civic Center can use that for whatever they want to, provided it's nonspecificly donated. And that's what this reverting fund is all about.
Right. So, if someone specifically donates to the Civic Center, that money stays with the Civic Center, doesn't go to the general fund, it can't be used in other departments?
Right.
But if it was specific for a roof, there's no way to control what if that got used for a roof or not, even though it was in their fund? If they decide to use it for carpet later on, there would be nothing that would stop that, correct?
No, because you'd have to show you'd have your fund separated. If I come up and donate $1,000 for roof repair, that $1,000 can only be used for roof repair because you have to, whether it be the committee or whoever, make sure that the money is used for what it's supposed to. Otherwise, you could just take it and use it for anything. Now, if I come up and give you $1,000 and say, "Here, this is for the Civic Center," then you could use it for planting flowers around there or anything you wanted to. But if there's a specific amount, it's got to be logged in as for that.
Dustin, can you clarify that, please? So, if $1,000 goes into this non-reverting fund that somebody says specifically they want it for the roof?
That money could be earmarked specifically then for the roof, and it'd be the board's obligation to abide by that.
Okay.
Well, the committee.
The committee, okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number 2-2022, an ordinance to establish a non-reverting donation fund within the budget of the Civic Center.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sayadashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Moving on. Appropriation Transfer Resolution Number 4-2022, be resolved by the Common Council of the City of Peru, Miami County, Indiana as follows. The transfer of appropriations as requested by the Clerk Treasurer of the City of Peru, Indiana, has been found by the proper officers to be necessary. The transfer is hereby appropriated and directed as of 12/31/2021. Entertain a motion to consider Resolution Number 4-2022.
I make a motion to consider appropriation transfer resolution 4-2022.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sayadashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Discussion?
Yeah, I would like to know...this is kind of a vague statement. Indiana...the Clerk Treasurer of the City of Peru, Indiana, has been found by the proper officers. To be necessary, to be necessary for what? Could you have a little more detail? Somebody could give a little more detail on that? Why is it necessary?
I would say it's necessary to balance out the budget for the end of the year.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
To balance out the budget for the end of the year of 2021, there were some line items in the negative, and these are going to offset, and we don't...so, we don't end in any negative balances.
Okay.
Do we need to sign this, Lori?
Yes, I have.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Why are they moving $5,000 from the pension, fire pension, to the Pension Secretary?
I honestly don't know. I'm sorry.
And why are they moving $13,000 from the clubhouse manager at the golf course to Gulf Water Electric and Internet?
Has anybody heard of the golf course?
Maybe we should table this.
They should have been there to answer that because they overspent. It's my understanding that at the end of every year, they have a balance left over that they have to reappropriate money for on the golf course and the parks.
There's quite a bit on the golf course. There's $5,000 that are moved from golf course operator to golf fuel. There's $3,500 that are being moved from golf pro shop labor to golf concessions, and then the $13,000 that I mentioned. There's also $10,000 on here that's being moved from motor vehicle highway perp to other capital outlay.
And I can't answer the questions you're asking.
Dustin, does this have to be passed today? Can we table it for next?
I think it needs to be passed as soon as possible. That way, the year end can be done and the budget can be closed out. I don't necessarily pay attention to the deadlines for the State Board of Accounts as it's the clerk's responsibility, and if she has it listed and ready to go, I'd assume it's probably close to the deadline.
Do you know if it's...if there's a pressing deadline on this, Lori?
I don't know.
I mean...
I know they got a meeting this Thursday.
What this is for, moving money from one pocket to the next, I mean, golf course, the golf course, it's not like it's coming from the general fund. It's coming from a line...a budgeted item that obviously they have money left over to another pocket, same departments generally.
I can possibly say that the fuel may be for the gas golf carts that they have now when before they had the electric.
This is the same thing that we did last year, and the explanation I got, and I think Lori helped explain a lot of it. If they went over on one thing, but they were a little fat on their budget, and this one, it doesn't go out of the...this pot, it just moves it over just to balance this out, so that's not in the negative, still comes out of their same fund.
They just want to close out the negative into the positive?
It's just if you go over on gas and you got more on water, then you could just switch it over just to make it so you're not in the negative when you close out your budget at the end of the year.
They can't have negative accounts at the end of the year?
Yeah, that's right. I...I'm speaking for myself. I'd still kind of like to understand better before I pass, before I approve it, but can we table it till...
I'm not going to table it.
Well, we can take a vote if we can move...I won't vote to table it, though.
But you're not the only person here. She wants the motion to table it. Somebody can second it, and we can vote on it. You're not the queen.
We can.
Yeah. I'd like the motion to table this until next month. Second. Oh, okay. Then, we're not going to table it. Then, we have a vote? We vote to adopt?
Somebody has to make a motion to adopt it.
Somebody has to make a motion to adopt Resolution 4-2022 in order to vote. Right now, we're under discussion.
What are we going to do? Are you going to vote to table, or are you going to vote?
I already made a motion to table it and didn't get a second, so now we're going to...
You can't...well, that's good.
I already made a motion to table it and didn't get a second, so now we're going to move on, and...
Right. Your motion died.
I'm aware of that.
In the second.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah.
So, now we're up either...
Continue discussion, or if someone makes a motion.
Motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion to adopt appropriation transfer resolution 4-2022.
Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
No.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sayadashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
No.
Moving on. City Peru Common Council, ordinance number 5-2022, an ordinance adding the Airport Rescue Plan Act Grant Program Fund. Need motion to consider ordinance number 5-2022. Second. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sayadashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Okay, open for discussion.
How much money did the Aviation receive out of ARP money? Do you know, Lori, with ARP money for this grant or...am I...can you understand the...explain the grant to me, please, a little bit?
No, not...no, I can't really. I don't really have...I don't have anything to do with these at all.
Okay.
Now, the ARP money, I mean, no one's received any money out of that, correct?
Right, yeah, that's...
Okay.
Yeah, but it's...it's a...can anybody explain this grant or ARP money?
I think I'll be able to tell you that amount. Give me a second. I'll bring it up in my email. However, this is not generally the same ARP. This is ARPA, Airport Rescue Grant Program, American Rescue Plan Act 2021, for airports specifically, so separate funds, separate grants. I think they all flow from the same source, obviously. A little different. If you give me one moment here, I'll try to find that amount. I want to say $25,000, though.
This one here was a grant that they had applied for, and in order to receive their share of this grant, this has to pass before the city council.
Right.
Otherwise, they don't even get considered for the grant money that's out there.
I believe they had like $13,000 at one point, and $38,000 in another one.
Yeah, this...
Into the separate grants.
I believe this is the third one.
Left. There are several different grants. I don't have them with me. They received like over $400,000 at one point, and worked on the runway lights.
This is for, specific for this one, is my question?
Right, they each have it, they get grants.
I understand that, but this is a specific grant that I'm wanting to get some information about, so...
Right, but I go to their meetings.
I know. So can you explain this, then?
They need to have this in there so they can get the money when they need to use it.
I understand, I'm just, okay.
They want to be able to use it to purchase fuel for, for the airport. And they were there too, that they couldn't get hold of it because it was in the...
I'm not sure if this is the one for $32,000. Right, that's the old one.
Right, we already created a fund for that one.
I understand the procedural part of it. I just want the detailed part of it, that, you know.
They do need this, though.
Just the information part of it before, I don't know, because we are the oversight, like financial oversight, or legislative body. We ought to be asking a few questions. Well, I'm going to ask a few questions, so. Should we table this? Is there immediate need to spend it?
It's not a matter of spending, it's a matter of it being dispersed from the government.
Okay, well...
Right, all this, all this ordinance does is just sets up the bond.
Okay.
They get the grant, so I don't think there's a risk in doing it.
Okay. See, that's all I need to know, is what...
I don't think there's a risk in doing it. I mean, all we're doing is setting up a fund, so if they do get a, do get a grant for the airport, then it's there. And they can put the money straight in there.
Thank you, that's it. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 5-2022, an ordinance adding the Airport Rescue Plan Act Grant Program Fund.
Second.
Who seconded?
I do. Motion been made and seconded to accept ordinance 5-2022. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Sayadashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
All right, moving right along. Before we go into communications, I would like to personally thank every employee for the City of Peru, whether they're with the Street Department, Fire Department, Police Department, for the job they did during this last snowstorm. It's not something that they were used to, but it's something I'm getting kudo calls from Kokomo, Loganport, some of the surrounding cities and towns, stating that Peru streets and everything, even the sanitation workers, were out in this stuff, taking care of us. And I want to personally thank each and every one of them. Open it up for communication. Do you have anything? Any council member have any communication, Tom?
I have a couple things. One of them was, I was going to compliment the folks for taking care of us. I think that's great. Thanks for doing that. The other thing is, can you tell me, Loganport Road, I had a question about it. Is the city responsible for taking care of that road, or is the county, is...
No, county.
Cal County?
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
That answers it.
All right.
That's a little bit rough.
That's all I have.
Any, any communications from the audience?
We have, we have, need to vote for putting, putting Pat as the Board of Works liaison?
Okay.
Do I make a motion? Is that how I do it, Dustin?
Yeah, I just motion.
I motion that we put, relieve Tom from the Board of Works position and make Pat the Board of Works liaison.
Second.
Perfect.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Guston?
Yes.
Plotho?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Russell?
Yeah.
Sayadashni?
Yes.
Wolf?
No.
That's, it's a lot of meeting, a lot of information.
Anything else from the council? Anything from the public? If not, we're up for adjournment.
Just remember that if you want to see the downtown revitalization plan, it's right now, you can go over to Seven Pillars, and it's great.
I'm going to adjourn.
Yeah, the public is, we are adjourned. I'm just, I'm just spouting. The public can, is welcome to be over there.
Do you say second?
Thank you.